Good evening. This is the special village board meeting for Monday, December 9th, for the Village of Oregon. Candy, do you want to do roll call for us?
Bally.
Here.
Donovan.
Glish.
Here.
Horton.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
And Peterson.
Here.
Thank you. So at this time, we have community input. So this part of the agenda allows us to hear from members of the community, as long as it's not already on the agenda. If you want to talk something about on the agenda, you can always raise your hand then. But is there anyone that would like to give us any input from the community at this time? That seems like a no? All right. Thanks for being here. Item number four is review of 2019 estimated tax bill by Finance Director Nowinski. Please note, the village's share of the tax bill remains at approximately 25% of the total tax bill. So for those watching, there's a pretty detailed spreadsheet information in our packet. Any highlights you want to talk about this?
Just that, you know, so throughout the budget process, this is the value that we use to show you the increase in the village levy of $88.64. And this is, again, for an average household. And Lisa takes that and plugs in all the various taxing bodies, as well as the tax credit and the first dollar credit and that sort of increase would be if your house was exactly this value. And then the other value we had throughout the budget discussion was if your house remained constant of value, your taxes would actually be going down. So just examples. And we know the tax bills got mailed today, so that people will be getting their property tax bills this week sometime.
Yay. Jerry, you have a question?
Yes. I think you just called on me. I don't think I...
Yeah.
I guess I do have a question.
Okay.
Mike, can you... I don't realize. I should have called and had you ready to deal with this. But if you had to list some of the major items contributing to the increase...
For the village?
For the village, yeah.
Forget about the other...
Personnel.
Pardon?
Personnel increases. Adding staff. Adding staff in the PD, the senior center, and the fire district.
What about debt service?
Debt service wasn't... was pretty consistent, I would say. I don't think that was the big impact.
Okay.
I'd have to say... I'd say personnel, Jerry.
Personnel, okay.
And what Lisa and I talked about during the budget, is we're going to, hopefully, for the '21 budget, we're going to try to hold that flat and let the levy catch up for a year. We'll, you know, hopefully, we'll see how that turns out.
Yeah. Plus, we're investing more in roads or streets.
Yeah.
And we're investing in equipment, you know.
Yeah. But the thing that increased the general fund this year was definitely adding a police officer, adding a position, the senior center, and then adjusting to one position, increasing it to a division chief in the fire district.
Okay, very good. Also, in the packet, there's this nice little pie charts. And I like pie charts because they're obvious, at least to me. And that'll be in the tax... included with the tax bill also.
Is it, Candy, do you know?
This one is not.
Okay. Is there some kind of explanation with the tax bill as to...
We used... No. We used to send information out, and we realized that people were just discarding it and just paying their taxes. So we... If you're on the email notification list, I think Candy just sent the whole slew of information out just this afternoon, including an information guide.
And it essentially will be on your tax bill because you'll be able to see the breakdown of each taxing jurisdiction.
Very good. I'm just trying to cut down on your phone calls.
We like phone calls.
Okay. I know you do. I know you do. So I call you.
We've actually found that if we want to get information out to people, it's better to do it in a separate mailing or a separate email than putting information in the tax bill. It hasn't been very successful.
It's fine with me.
Yeah.
Yeah, this has... This actually pie chart hasn't changed within the past, like, what did we decide, four, five years?
Yeah. And it's pretty consistent for municipal government that we're about 25 to less than 30% of the tax bill. That's pretty consistent.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on this? Thank you for bringing that together. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank Lisa for doing that for us.
Yep, I'll do that.
All right. Item five, we have a discussion on possible action regarding change of agent for QuickTrip 372 at 916 Janesville Street. We have a recommended motion to approve the agent to Adam W. Larson at QuickTrip number 372, and note that the Chief of Police has approved him as a satisfactory agent. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are any of you aye? No? Okay. Congratulations, Adam. All right. Now we have another one. We have discussion on possible action regarding a change of agent, QuickTrip number 731 at 135 North Main Street. We have a recommended motion to approve the change of the agent to Carol J. Lockard at QuickTrip number 731, and this has also been approved by our Chief of Police as a satisfactory agent. So entertain a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, we have approval of pending new operator licenses. This is... This has been recommended approval by the Police Department for headquarters. We have Katie A. Hanson. I entertain a motion to approve Katie Hanson.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then the main purpose for the meeting is number eight. We have a discussion with Town and Country Engineering. We have preliminary presentation and discussion with the village board regarding proposed 2020 wastewater treatment plant facility plan and cost effectiveness evaluation. We have lots of information in the packet, so if you're watching online, tune in on our village website, and there's lots of info there. So yes, welcome, folks. Thanks for being here.
Just a...
Yes, please, John.
I was going to give a brief introduction on why we're... why we are where we are, and I'll let Town and Country Engineers take it after that. But essentially, you know, we own and operate our wastewater treatment facility, and we have had an active facility there since, well, on both sides of the creek, since about 1937, I believe. You know, as we've gone through, I think, four upgrades since that time. It's been a while. It's been a very long time since our last facility plan. One of my goals in starting... Well, one of my goals has been to get a better understanding on what our long-range plans are for the wastewater treatment plant, what kind of projects we have coming down the pipe, as well as what type of options should we be looking for. And then also, we are required to by DNR to update our facilities plan. What is the frequency?
Twenty years.
Every 20 years. And we are over that 20 years right now. So we're due. And so what we did about a year and a half ago, we had Town and Country hired to take a look at that. And basically, what it is to come in and take a look at everything in our plant, our systems, the equipment, our operating, our flows, the buildings, the facilities, everything associated with that, and to take a look at what we would or could be needing to upgrade in the future, what maybe is a higher priority, what maybe be our deficiencies, and that type of thing. So for the past year, year and a half, Town and Country Engineering has been taking care of that and looked at flows. We did have a Public Works Committee meeting maybe three or four or five months ago, maybe a little longer than that, where Ben came and spoke about basically loading and flows and that type of thing. This is a very, very complex kind of analysis, and it's looking at a lot of different things. It's looking at things politically, it's looking at things from an engineering standpoint, and looking at things financially. And there are many different spokes to this wheel of our wastewater treatment facility and plan. One of these... What kind of further complicates this is our need to evaluate what we call regionalization. And regionalization is essentially us pumping to Madison Metropolitan Sanitary District. As you may know, I believe, MMSD, as they're known, how many partners do they have, communities?
Twenty... 23, 26, something like that.
Twenty-three, 26 communities that are pumping. And it's all the way from Moonekey to Forest, Middleton, Verona. About the only communities locally that don't are ourselves and Stoughton. And so one of the primary objectives of looking at this was the feasibility, wanting to look at and evaluate the feasibility of whether we would, instead of sinking tens of millions of dollars into our plant, whether we would look at constructing pipelines and eventually pumping up to MMSD. So Town and Country Engineering is going to present all of this information tonight. And I enter this just with a little bit of a caveat to say, this is a lot of information. It's very complex, and it's going to be... It's even... I've gone through this a couple times, and it's even hard for me to go through it, even after listening to it several times, to keep my hands around it at all times. So please ask questions. If you feel yourself glossing over because of just the numbers and everything else, don't be afraid to ask questions or ask for more clarification on something because it is a very complex and kind of can be a confusing thing because we are facing some pretty big decisions and some pretty big financial numbers, and also the possibility of maybe some things that might be outside of our control from a permitting standpoint as far as what might force our hand towards a decision that could be more costly. So I don't know if that's a...
Perfect control.
And without further ado, I... Yeah, welcome Town and Country Engineering.
Yep. So just a refresher. I'm Ben Hydam, and I'm with Town and Country Engineering. Been doing the facilities plan for you guys. I've also got Cassie Elmer along with me. She's been kind of doing the heavy lifting behind the scenes, and so she's going to smack me over the back of the head if I say a number wrong. What I thought we could do tonight is because we've talked about this with Public Works to a degree, but more specifically, I can give you guys a little bit of background into some of the conversations that Public Works has had, what goes into facilities planning. But then the big meat and potatoes that we want to talk about tonight is kind of the cost effectiveness evaluation, and go through the complexity of where the cost comes from. And I'm going to try and keep it fairly simple in that regard. But then also talk through some of the complications relative to how the DNR looks at everything we're talking about here, and most specifically, the big picture concept of are we, as a village, going to stay with our wastewater treatment here in town, or are we going to pump our sewage to Madison? Because those are really the two big issues that we look at in a macro picture here, and then we start to narrow that down in each of those into the finer details of if we're staying here, what are we going to do? If we're pumping to Madison, what are we going to do? So big picture, when it comes to facilities planning, I like to think of it in three big parts. The first part is what are we going to plan for? It's a 20-year planning period that's required by code. And in that whole planning effort, we've got to think about what population we're going to plan for, what do you want for commercial growth, what are your existing treatment plant flows and loadings of pollutants coming to the treatment plant, and then what are some of the other things that play into those numbers? That's the first part of the plan. The second part is then, given what we want to plan for for the next 20 years, how does our existing treatment plant address that? And if it has any shortcomings, either due to age of equipment and infrastructure, or due to capacities associated with the planned growth, how can we accommodate those? And then, once you go through a cost effectiveness evaluation for that, you take a look at what is our most cost-effective option, and then prepare a user rate and funding determination. So each three of those parts kind of get wrapped up into the full-blown facilities plan, and at the end of it, then we would both have conversations, more conversations with you as a village board, but then also have a public hearing to discuss that with the public. So right now, where we're at is kind of at the end of that Phase Two of the facilities plan. In the packet that I had sent over, really Section 1 kind of summarizes where we're at from a planning standpoint of design flows and loads. And the big things to take away from this are, you know, we're planning for an increase in flow at the treatment plant. The design... The current treatment plant facilities plan that was updated in the early 2000s, just from a capacity standpoint, had a projected population capacity of 9,400 people and a treatment capacity of about 2.4 million gallons per day. Obviously, we're over the 9,400 people, but due to less usage than projected, I would call it, you're not at that design flow. Though you're at about 90% of that design flow in recent years. The 2040 design projection, which is the design year that we selected 20 years out, proposes using 16,300 people as the design population, which is consistent with your comprehensive plan. And then that would mean an increase in the flow at the treatment plant to about 3.2 MGD as a rated capacity. The pollutant loadings, which are down below, don't change a lot. The TSS, while on paper it was rated at 2,850 pounds, you can see there, the actual capacity of the treatment plant was about what you... what we're proposing it to be. So the pollutant loads are actually fitting in quite nicely with the unit processes that you have at the treatment plant. Because of really water-saving measures, you're able to accommodate a much larger population than what had been previously projected. However, we are showing that increase in flow. One of the big things that we talked about with Public Works and was an encouragement for some of how you guys laid out your budgets was you have a lot of what's called INI, or inflow and infiltration. That's clear water that enters the sewer system that is not from a household, you know. So that can be cracked pipes, that can be sump pumps, a variety of things that allow groundwater and surface water to get into your sewer system. Currently, on an average daily basis, not during wet weather or anything special like that, you guys pump about 600,000 gallons a day for your water system, and your treatment plant treats anywhere between 1.2 million and 1.8 million gallons per day on an annual average basis. So you have between two and three times the water at the treatment plant that you pump out of your wells, which is a lot of INI. Further, during wet periods, you can see that number increase quite substantially for an extended period of time. The last three years have been very wet, and you guys have seen some very large flows. And in response to that, you guys as a village board, and we've been working with you to do an INI study and try and identify many of those areas, and are anticipating putting out a sewer rehabilitation bid this spring to try and address some of that. But given we're doing this planning document now, and we don't know specifically what we're going to be able to get for reductions from INI, this includes quite a bit of capacity just associated with clear water. So the more, over the long term, you guys can do to address those clear water and INI entering your system, the more life you essentially extend out of your treatment facility. So that's kind of that first third. And so that's the numbers that we talked about with Public Works, and that's kind of what we've been planning around since then. The next step after that was taking a look at what alternatives do we have at the treatment plant to accommodate that 20-year projection. And in the big picture, the second page of this memorandum is primarily the matrix that we've used. So Jeff, if you go to the next page, even beyond that, where alternative one, in all of the conversation we're going to have from this point forward, is stay in Oregon. Alternative two is pump to Madison. In alternative one, what we took a look at is what are the most specific things that we felt were deficiencies at the treatment facility, and we kind of separated those out. So alternative one, the primary analysis is just big picture, what types of things need to happen. And then the preliminary treatment and secondary separation analyses were the two areas where we felt more focus needed to be given on exactly what you guys were doing at the treatment plant. So primary analysis, alternative one, one is sticking with the exact treatment processes that you have today, which is not getting super technical with it, but sticking with activated sludge, continuing that blower project that we had talked about a couple months ago, and then staying with an aerobic digestion process for your biosalads handling. Just for comparison's sake, we looked at alternative one, two being, instead of continuing your activated sludge the way it is, install some facilities to allow you to do what's called enhanced biological phosphorus removal, which essentially means we're going to remove the phosphorus biologically instead of more chemically. So you're weighing off costs there of an increased capital cost because we're going to have to build tankage compared to potentially decreased operating costs due to chemicals. And then lastly, we looked at changing your sludge processing system to anaerobic digestion. That's that alternative one, three, in which you would produce a biogas that you could then use beneficially and convert that. That also has a very significant capital cost associated with it. And in general, when we started this, we kind of anticipated that it probably wouldn't make a lot of cost sense because even though you're... you guys are a fairly large facility at 3 MGD, the loadings, because it's primarily residential loadings, really didn't justify switching current infrastructure that works very well to something like anaerobic digestion. But those were the three big picture alternatives we looked at. On the preliminary treatment side of things, that would include you have a pump station that collects all of the sewage in town and pumps it into your treatment facility, and then it goes through what's called a headworks building, in which you have a device called a screen that removes trash and debris from the wastewater before it goes into the treatment plant, and then also a grit separator, which removes sand and particulates like that from the wastewater so that it reduces wear on downstream processes. Those two, we kind of peeled out of everything because the pump station has been identified as having both capacity and maintenance issues. It was... It's a very unique pump station that is very difficult to both maintain the influent wet well and some of the piping that's associated with it. Similarly, the headworks, we've identified mostly from a capacity standpoint as being under capacity currently. A lot of the channels that are in the headworks are very narrow, making it difficult to pass the amount of flow that you need to through the headworks. So we've identified those as a single thing to be considered, and the range of consideration was what can we do to improve those? That would be the preliminary treatment analysis, part one, or alternative one. Alternative two would be, what if we built a new pump station but used the existing headworks? Alternative three would be, use the existing pump station, new headworks, and then four is all new. And then the secondary separation treatment analysis, considered kind of a variety of ways that we would have secondary clarifiers. The secondary clarifiers are the four moderately sized domes. Right now, what we identified is they're undersized. Yep, perfect. So if you're looking up at the screens, those four processes there. One is, how can we essentially do as much retrofit as possible to reuse as much of that infrastructure as possible? The challenge is those tanks are fairly low in the ground, and when the creek is at kind of 100-year flood stage, it's difficult to pass adequate flow through those tanks by gravity. So the alternative two was, what if we build new tanks that are higher up out of the ground and pump to those? The advantage of that is it gives you capacity for future stuff, the unknown. You know, someday, you're going to have to disinfect. Someday, you may have to put filters in because of regulatory changes. If we change the elevation of those tanks, you'll have room to fit those in, those future processes. And then the three and four are just, I'm not going to focus too much on them. They were alternative technologies that would allow us to use those existing tanks as much as possible. And neither one of them turned out to be cost-effective, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on those. Alternative...
Well, and so I'm just in summary of this stuff. I mean, what we've identified as the primary... Some of the primary concerns at the wastewater plant is effectively getting the water into the wastewater plant.
Into and through the wastewater plant.
And then preliminary treatment. Everything hydraulically, I mean, you're looking at a couple things. Hydraulically, how do we get it through the plant? One of the deficiencies we have is the existing headworks pumping building. And that's... The more research we found in this, and I found out that the reason all of our wastewater still goes over near the police station there and then is lifted up, was a cost-cutting measure. This is 30...
25, 30 years.
25, 30, 40 years ago. And that's really limiting how we get water to the plant and then through the plant. And we have had struggles with that. That's why we had to clean out those force mains this last year. It's also why we had some sewer backups when we had a really large flow event, and our... The tank in the pump station was overwhelmed and everything, so.
Alternative two, I'm not going to go spend a lot of time going through the individual details, but that alternative two is, again, pump to Madison Met. We did look at a variety of options with that, including whether you put a pump station where the old treatment plant or the existing treatment plant is, or if we put it across Highway 14 in that kind of southeast service area, area which would then eliminate a future pump station. Also, where we discharge, there were three, in the end, three alternatives identified of where we could discharge after meeting with Madison Met. One of them would be a planned interceptor that is in Fitchburg that kind of follows the railroad corridor, and we would pump it kind of around the village to essentially Oak Hill in that area. And then there would be a Madison sewer that would get extended out to catch our flow. Alternatively, we could pump all the way up to, I believe it's McCoy Road, but the Nine Springs E-way area, right before you get to Madison, which would then discharge to Madison's Pump Station 11. And then the last alternative we looked at was pumping all the way to the Madison wastewater treatment plant. The unique thing with those that we'll get into as we talk costs is each one of those has a different connection, obviously a different capital cost because we're going different distances with pipe, things like that, but then also has a different connection fee from Madison, which ends up being a very substantial number when it comes to our cost evaluation because those connection fees are their attempt to recover costs for infrastructure they've already installed. So some of those, they have the connection fees broken up into three categories. One would be for that Fitchburg interceptor, one would be for that Pump Station 11 and associated interceptor, and then the last one would be for the Madison Metropolitan Sewers District Treatment Plant. So we'll talk about those in a little bit more detail. But that's why we looked at each of those three options, is because it has an impact on both what you're paying on a capital cost basis, but then what we've got also to pay for as a connection fee to the Madison Metropolitan Sewers District.
Any questions so far?
Yeah. How's everybody doing?
Hi. Thanks. It's a good overview so far. I'd like to ask a couple of questions about INI, which I'll refer to in the future, as leakage.
Yep.
To the system. If we eliminated most of it, if not all, I know you can't eliminate all of it, but would that affect the life of the current facility?
Certainly, it would affect the life of the current facility. A lot of the, if you go back to the page that identifies, it kind of has the matrix of the alternatives, it would have very little impact on what is in the primary analysis because most of that is just general age, addressing age of infrastructure. There is a portion of that, and it is upsizing of piping to accommodate increased flows. But a bulk of that is just age of infrastructure. The preliminary treatment analysis would certainly have an impact on that. However, when we get to low versus ideal cost, the ideal would be building new and attempting to forego some of the maintenance issues that would be there, irregardless of whether we have that INI or leakage or not. The secondary separation would have a pretty big impact, probably, on what we would do there. So it, I guess it kind of varies as we go along.
But another point I'd like to make is, no matter what we...
But another point I'd like to make is no matter what we do with the alternatives here as far in regard to treatment plants-
Mm-hmm.
And whether we use M M S D, Madison Metro, or continue to do it in town here, we still have to use our infrastructure to get it to.
Correct.
So it seems to me that I N I or leakage is a primary thing that we need to deal with.
I would wholeheartedly agree with that.
Okay. So what's our plan for doing that, Jeff?
We have, I don't have the exact numbers, but we have, I think, almost three hundred thousand dollars-
I was going to say three hundred.
Three hundred thousand dollars this next year under contract that will be taken care of. Our, kind of the low hanging fruit first is manhole ceiling. Second is possibly some lining and grouting of, of main lines, and that's, that's kind of the typical low hanging fruit of I N I, and then you start to chase, chase smaller things. Just in the last year, in fact, two weeks ago, we replaced, we, we worked with a private contractor who was replacing a faulty sewer lateral that was probably anywhere, we estimate anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five gallons a minute continually twenty-four hours a day, which is an enormous amount of, of water. So we're trying to, you know, we're trying to find, just like anything else, in a leaky system, you try to find your biggest, biggest leaks first and attack those, and then as you, you move forward, I see us doing continued I N I projects for the foreseeable future.
Okay, I mean, how many years or how long do you think that project will continue?
We will always be pursued-
Indefinitely would be the best way.
Indefinitely, okay.
Because you'll always have deteriorating sewers, you'll always have, you know, over time, you know, if you think about the life of a pipe underground, you know, you might get eighty, a hundred years out of something like that, and, you know, so even, even pipe underground deteriorates over time, and you just kind of have to have this continual means of addressing. But between Jeff and staff, you know, we've, we've looked at a lot of the pipe in town and have identified a lot of low hanging fruit that is going to be a part of that first three hundred thousand to try and address manholes and areas that we know are issues in the sewer system contributing, in some cases, a lot of water.
Okay, so will we, we won't be able to eliminate all the leakage, but we should be able to do eighty, ninety percent of it?
Eighty, ninety would be a high number.
High number, okay.
My, my experience has been, you know, catching the low hanging fruit is great. One of the problems is as soon as you go in, you make repairs, six, twelve months later, you might see things drop and then come back, and what happens is you kind of relieve, you know, essentially your sewer system is draining groundwater from the lower portions of town. If you plug up the portions of the public sewer, that'll allow groundwater to rise a little bit in that area, and it just finds its way to the private side, and you start fighting the same battle there. So a lot of these improvements, you'll see, you know, an immediate reduction, and you might see fifty, sixty or more percent, but then it'll slowly come back because that groundwater just has a chance to go up to the, the other pipes that you don't really have control over a whole lot. Ideally, if you could get fifty percent, I think you'd be, you know, in the right direction, and I think-
You mean an additional fifty?
Kind of a total fifty percent reduction of that I N I, and if you can get more than that, even better. But I think that's kind of a reasonable target.
So we've got major leakage in the system.
We also, you know, Ben mentioned, you know, we've talked about it recently in, in some village board meetings, sump pumps. And, you know, at this time of year, people don't have any other location to put their sump pump, you know, and, and we allow in our ordinance for it to go into the sewer system, and that adds, that adds a lot. And with the last couple of years with high groundwater situations, you know, we don't see that going away. What we hope to see over time as we do projects, that, you know, if we, if we do a project in your area, then you shouldn't be allowed to be putting it into the sewer because now you can put it into a dedicated pipe.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to bring that up next, the sump pumps.
One of, one of the, Corey, do you-
Yeah, just on that, you know, I think that's definitely something that we need to attack, and, you know, if we want to go to Madison Metropolitan Sewers District, their sewer use ordinance will not allow us to discharge sump pumps in, so we may not have a choice if that's the option that we select.
Correct.
I have a question about the Madison Metropolitan option.
Mm-hmm.
Do, let's, let's say we feel that that's a good way to go down the road, do they have the option to deny us and say, whoa, we're already at capacity, we're going to want to take your municipal-
They would have that option.
Would, that's a possibility.
The likelihood of them doing that is very low. We have had conversations with Madison Met already, that's how we, you know, at the back of the packet, you'll see we have a preliminary connection fee determination. Every conversation we've had, they've been very willing and interested to have the village pumped to Madison. They have, they have one bottleneck in terms of the piping in their system and conveying it to get there that would accelerate a project they would otherwise be doing, but otherwise they have sufficient capacity to take on the village.
Okay. Do we, do we, do we have the items that we're planning on doing, the maintenance items to reduce the I N I or the leakage? Is that part of our capital plan now?
Yeah.
So, I mean, do we just plan for X number of dollars every year? Is that how we're doing it?
Yeah. It's kind of, I look at it kind of like you, we look at our roadway maintenance budget right now, is we, we budget what we feel we can withstand as far as, you know, tolerate in the, in the village for, for our debt service, and we, you know, plan on that amount per year.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
And this may be, I may be a little bit premature with this question, but if we do decide to exercise the option of taking it up to Madison Metro, what happens to the old sewer plant?
It would be selectively demolished. You would like-
Portions of it.
Yeah, portions of it would be demolished, others, I mean, as, as you guys see fit for use in your public works facilities, you would keep buildings that are of benefit to you. That admin building was built in oh eight, something like that?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there, there's no reason to demolish a building like that. Some of the other building structures would be of benefit probably for you and your public works facilities. The tanks would be demolished.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, kind of along that vein, what would happen to the people that work there if we went to M M S D?
You would, you would certainly still have, I mean, your, your O and M cost doesn't go to zero. You know, you're still going to have a collection system. The way everything's been talked about with M M S D thus far is you would own the pump station and the force main getting you up to Madison Met. So there would still be levels of maintenance, though, specific to treating wastewater, you would not have a need for as much as you do today. Now, I think you had talked about-
Yeah, and we, we would be converting some of our staff, and we've talked about this with the staff to a certain extent, and, you know, some, depending on position where they are and, and everything, they would likely convert to a full-time public works type of position. And, but like, you know, we still have sixty-four miles of sanitary sewers that need to be taken care of. We have, at that point, three pump stations that need to be maintained. We'd have a vector truck that needs to be operated and sent out cleaning lines, and so we still have a lot of operational expenses, but you're right, the treatment itself, just the treatment plant itself would be different. And, you know, we have three staff members, and we've talked to them about that. From the timeframe it would probably take for all this to happen, it's likely we might have a retirement or a reassignment in that time period.
So, so we talked, talked about maintenance stuff. What is our system in pretty good shape?
Similar to what we've been talking about, kind of the I N I is a good indicator of the, the, the life of your system.
Right.
So in, in, you have a lot of portions of the town that are very new, and in those areas, your system looks great. There's areas that, you know, generally when you have leakage, it's in older parts of town, and, and those, that leakage is associated with some sort of small failures of your system, and those are the areas that with the I N I study and these repairs that we're looking to, to make improvements to. So there's areas where it needs some work, there's no doubt about it. But I think those, in conjunction with where the water's coming from, both are kind of in the same areas and are leading the decision-making process of when and where you make repairs.
Okay.
If that's a wishy-washy enough answer for you, but-
That's good.
In general, we're talking, the older parts of town have the oldest pipe, and the older parts of town are also in the lowest areas of town, and therefore are kind of the guided areas where you have the most water leaking into your system.
The oldest parts of town also tend to have the oldest roads, don't they? And means they're probably slated, when you redo a road, you redo all the infrastructure underneath, so.
Yes, yeah. That, those, some portions of those have some of our oldest four-inch water main, or not, we've had four-inch water main out there, and lead services which will have to be replaced and everything, so this kind of goes part and parcel with that.
Other questions right now and all that? Otherwise, I'll get into the cost effectiveness portion of this. So the next page is section three, or the next area is section three, and what this has is just capital cost. So first, this page kind of tells you, what am I going to be paying to make upgrades? Couple of things with this before we talk real numbers. With the primary anal, or with the alternative one analysis, one thing we looked at is, these are total capital cost expenditures to address all of these things, and what this represents is what if you were to do it tomorrow, kind of on an estimates basis. We have talked about, you know, you can phase this in over the course of a period of time, and when we get to the cost effectiveness part, we take that into account. So right now, this is overall capital cost, but there's the ability to phase in work at the treatment plant because most of what we're doing is making improvements to existing facilities that you have there, or adding small things here and there in the big picture. You know, similar to the blower project, the blower project that we talked about a couple of months ago that we're going to be doing next year is included in all of these cost estimates, and when we get to the, the overtime cost estimate, we've assumed that's happening next year, and then the rest of the project wouldn't happen until some period after that. The other thing that I'll mention before we really dive into this is, this is, this is the capital cost portion. What the D N R requires us to look at is a present worth cost, and that's the, when you do facilities planning, that present worth cost is how you make a selection of your most cost-effective means of treating wastewater. And what that present worth is, is it's a twenty, twenty-year look, and that considers the capital cost at the year that it would be implemented. It, it considers your operations and maintenance cost, and we've made attempts to estimate what changes there might be with each of these different alternatives, including pumping to Madison. It considers replacement fund costs, which is a allocation that you set aside for long-term replacement of equipment, and then it considers salvage value. And for salvage value, we've tried to keep that fairly simple to, over the life of our twenty-year plan here, structures have a life of forty years, and equipment has a life of twenty years, so that if we have anything in there, that all fits into that salvage value. So at the end, any remaining life that's left in either a structure or a piece of equipment gets taken into account. So all of those get wrapped up together in a present worth cost using a discount rate that the D N R gives us. We bring them back to today's dollars over that whole twenty-year period, and those numbers, the lowest cost out of that analysis is your low-cost alternative. One important statistic to remember as we start digging into the weeds on this is, anything that's within ten percent of the low cost is considered equal. One of the things that we've got to talk about in here is how the connection fees for Madison Met get considered. D N R has stated to us that the connection fees cannot be considered in your cost effectiveness evaluation, and the reasoning for that is they're proposing that a facilities plan is a regional plan, so the, the plan that we're putting together for you today is actually considering treatment costs for the region, and a connection fee is a cost that Madison Met has already expended, even though we're talking about tens of millions of dollars for the Village of Oregon. Those are sunk costs, so in a cost effectiveness evaluation, those should not be considered. For the purposes of our discussion today, I've included it both ways, so we can kind of see what is the impact with and without, and then also, I've taken a look at an annualized cost, which really gets down more to the heart of what, what is the village paying for on a year-to-year basis, which is really how, what you guys care about as the board of how much does this cost the village as a whole, and then divide by number of residents, how much does it cost each resident of the village? Because those are the numbers that you guys care about more than a cost effectiveness evaluation.
That's, that's what will directly affect the rates-
Yes, that will defect, yes, that will be-
...we charge for our service.
The thing that impacts your user rates. From a capital cost standpoint, unless you guys want to go through the individuals, I'm just going to kind of give a high-level summary. So in alternative one, the low capital cost is roughly sixteen point seven million dollars, and that includes the lowest cost from each of those primary analysis, preliminary treatment, and secondary analysis. So you pick one from each column, gives you your total cost. We also, in sitting down with staff, identified an ideal alternative, which is nineteen million, nineteen point seven million dollars, and what that includes is sticking with your existing unit processes in that primary analysis, building a new pump station at headworks, and then building new final clarifiers at that elevated, the higher elevation, so that you have space for future processes. So by adding that three million dollars, you're significantly improving the influent pumping and overall maintenance of your raw wastewater pumping facilities, and then really providing yourselves a long-term, the ability to address wastewater in the Village of Oregon longer term when considering the potential for new regulations. So those, that's kind of the range of costs I would propose capital-wise for staying by yourselves. The pumping to Madison alternatives get a little bit fuzzier, and what those include is capital cost for a pump station, capital cost for the pipeline, and then also a connection fee charge. And that connection fee charge also gets complicated by the fact that Madison Met's connection fee is increasing pretty substantially over the next eight years. So what we show on the screen right now, the alternative two capital cost options, is a range of capital costs between nineteen point eight and twenty-two point five million, but then we also show a twenty twenty-four alternative capital, alternative two capital costs that is closer to twenty-six point eight and thirty-two point seven million. And the reason for that is, the reason for that substantial increase is that increase in connection fee over the next eight years. So what we are trying to present here is, this, this first one is a connection fee assuming twenty nineteen. We have three weeks left in twenty nineteen, I don't think we're going to get connected to Madison. So we use twenty twenty-four-
No, we're not.
Twenty twenty-four as just a reasonable timeframe to get connected to Madison. By the time you negotiate all of the necessary intermunicipal agreements, and we're able to lay out a routing option for the pipe and negotiate that whole process. So just for picture's sake, that's what's in there. You also, I'm not going to go through it in detail tonight, but there is the original memo from Madison Met, and you can see a page that looks like this, which I don't know what page, you don't have to transcrue all to it, Jeff, but there's a graph that looks like this, if you're perusing through this later, that shows what the long-term projected Madison Met connection fee is. The reason that that number is increasing so substantially over time is they reevaluated how they're addressing connection fees, and really it has to do with how they value the existing treatment plant. The, the connection fee, as I mentioned earlier, is broken up into the treatment plant, pump station eleven, and the cyan interceptor, which is the one through Fitchburg. Those, the cyan interceptor and the pump station eleven- Um, those, the the cyan interceptor and the pump station eleven gets increased three percent per year, um roughly. They do it based on the construction cost index, which is a statistic that gets published. Um, the treatment plant one um is being phased out or phased in over these eight years to that new level. And then once it gets to that, whatever the number was, the hundred and uh some dollars per square foot, it will then be adjusted based on the construction cost index as well. Um, so they, they're looking at the value of the treatment plant a little differently, plus they're planning for the capital improvements projects that they're going to be doing over the next uh eight years. So you can see there's a, there's a huge impact financially with uh how that connection fee plays in. Um, the connection fee ranges from, um, I believe it's, yeah, uh, it's twelve million if we connect in Fitchburg to uh three million if we connect all the way to the treatment plant. Um, but then obviously, your cost as the village to convey to that location increases with each of those. So the the actual low capital cost is uh pump to Fitchburg, um. Do I have that right, Cassie?
Yeah.
Pump to Fitchburg is the low capital cost. Um, and pump to uh pump station eleven is the high capital cost. But those then both increase pretty substantially over time uh relative to the treatment for her, the wastewater treatment plant.
It it should, uh, geez.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, it, I think it should be noted that, you know, at, when in our discussions with MMSD, um, there's a likelihood that MMSD would do the majority of construction of improvements to get um, like an interceptor from uh, right now, the interceptor is right about at Lacy Road, um, up there on fourteen um to extend it the next, what, three and a half, four miles south to M. Um, and and other things as far as even like getting a force main all the way up to Madison Met.
Well, right now, they have expressed no interest in the force main and pump station.
Okay.
Um, however, if we were ever to get to the point of having discussions with Madison, I would propose that's something that should be addressed uh because there are the potential for some pretty substantial cost savings for the village residents today um to have MMSD uh install that. And there is kind of a precedent on some of their previous connections that has been set because you do serve uh a resident of the city of Fitchburg, and that's Oak Hill. So Oak Hill is currently within a s- a municipality that is served by Madison Met because Fitchburg is served by Madison Met. Um, however, their sewage comes to the village. Um, so there, it's a little more than we probably should get into tonight. But if we ever got to that point, there would be some merit in considering uh pursuing that with Madison Met.
Did, does the board understand, have a good understanding of the fact that we've got these very large lump sum connection fees? That DNR is not allowing, or like it is indicating that they're not allowing us to include E and R present worth analysis? And Ben will talk about that, but that's a big, big factor because when you take, if, I mean, if you take, what do you say, ten, ten to twenty million dollars?
Yeah, twelve.
Twelve, twelve million dollars out of your equation, it can really swing what looks better on paper than than what it actually is. Because that has to, like Ben and I have talked numerous times, somebody has to pay that, right? I mean, uh, you know, and that's why we argue why it can't be put into this analysis because um, and and DNR is in the driver's seat when it comes to telling us, you know, in effect of what we can and can't do.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's where we kind of see ourselves kind of racing towards this decision, this fork in the road that we're going to be coming up on, on analyzing this and saying, you know, well, you know, it's cheap, it may, you know, you'll see soon, it's probably cheaper to stay with our own plant. But only because of what, well.
Connection fee, yeah.
Be because of the connection fees. And so it's, it took me a while to get my hands around the whole connection fee issue, but um, you know, I think, you know, as since somebody has to pay that, and those somebody has to be our residents and the people who end up connecting to this, um, I think it's very important that we continue to push towards this being part of the financial analysis. And even if DNR says it's not part of the financial analysis, it still has to be part of our analysis as we look at it from the village standpoint.
So Ben, um, on the page, the sheet, I think we're in, the first page after section three?
Yep.
Under alternative two, um, in the alternative two box, you have that little asterisk that says twenty-twenty-four MMSD cost?
Yep.
Those numbers are the connection fees.
Just the connection fee.
So that's an additional nineteen million.
Um, that's the total connection fee. So it's not in addition to, like in that first column.
Right.
Cyan interceptor, there's a twelve, one fifty-eight, zero, zero, zero. That is the connection fee in twenty nineteen.
Oh, okay.
The one in italics is the connection fee in twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, so that number would replace that second.
Switch the numbers out, yep.
I was like, is that in addition?
Nope, so that's, it's, it's an additional seven million dollars roughly um over the next five years.
So um, and you were going to get to this, or let me know if you're going to get to it. You, you had said that there's an ideal number for keeping the existent and upgrading.
Yes, that's, that's the nineteen point seven.
Is there an ideal number for connecting MMSD or even a ballpark?
Well, that's, that's those, if you go right below, kind of the bottom two boxes. There's a nineteen to twenty-two million or nineteen, almost twenty to twenty-two million and a twenty-six to thirty-two. So that nineteen to twenty-two is the range of costs in twenty-nineteen uh to pump to Madison. Um, and then the low cost there is um pumping through Fitchburg. And the high cost would be pumping to the Nine Springs E-way. Um, and then pumping all the way to the Madison Met treatment plant is in the middle there. Right now, um, I would propose, alternative two is just one propos- one big option with a range of costs. Because we have not done anything, nor has Madison Met done anything to approach the city of Fitchburg. Um, we have not negotiated any real, you know, land acquisition, right-of-way use, anything like that. So there's a variety of things that could, could make one option more or less feasible. If Fitchburg says no, um, we don't want to have that interceptor developed. And you look at, okay, we have to either pump it to McCoy Road or we have to pump it all the way to Nine Springs. In in most cases, you would think pumping to McCoy Road would be a better option for the village, but it's actually more expensive to pump it to McCoy Road than it is all the way to Nine Springs because there's about three million dollars of cost um associated with connecting to their their interceptor and pump station eleven. Um, and just the additional, I think it's four thousand feet of pipe that we'd have to run to get all the way up to the treatment plant um is is less cost than that three million dollars of of connection fee.
I was going to say, just real quickly, and maybe I'd, I'd hope we didn't assume this, but does everyone understand the difference between interceptor and a force main?
No.
No.
No idea.
Okay.
But we assume that you do, so that's all that really matters.
Interceptor is basically a large gravity pipe. So so it's, it's just a large gravity pipe and they, they make these large gravity pipes that are set at very, very low slopes. And and they can, they just, they flow. A force main is actually something that's been pumped. So it's a smaller diameter pipe, usually twelve-inch, fourteen-inch, fif- or sixteen-inch or well, fifteen-inch, eighteen-inch, whatever. Uh, pipes that at the end of it, or the beginning of them has a large pump that forces it through and hence the name force main. So if you think force main, you think pressure. Uh, if you think interceptor, you think gravity flowing open channel right down the pipe.
That would be a pump station, then?
Yes, pump station pumps to a force main, yep.
Okay. Right, but a force main can discharge to an interceptor and then flow gravity from then on.
It's like Legos. Yeah. Jennifer, the four, very stinky Legos. Yeah. Um, when you say interceptor, that's what we were talking about when we were talking about going across fourteen, correct?
Well.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's a variety of options with that as well.
Let me, actually, let's go to this, let's just go quickly to this map here because I think this is, this would be
The business park?
A little.
Jeff, Jen is asking about the business park.
Oh.
I was just trying to tie those two terms together.
Yeah, so initially, that was going to be interceptor, but when Jeff came here, we, we actually went now to a lift station um on the other side of fourteen.
And a lift station is a force main?
Has a force main associated.
So it goes deep.
Just so you can picture a little bit, um, what was, what is proposed in the Fitchburg interceptor? So the gravity pipe would be a forty-eight inch diameter pipe. Um, so you, all of the discharge to that flowing by gravity would be through a four-foot diameter pipe. While we're pump, in all of the pumping scenarios, we're talking about a twenty-four inch diameter pipe is the, is the size of pipe. Um, so when we pump to Fitchburg, we're going to have a pump station at our treatment facility um because that's where all of the village's pipes go to. And then we would pump through a twenty-four inch pipe to Fitchburg and it would discharge into that forty-eight inch pipe and drain into the MMSD sewer area. Um, if we pump all the way there, then we've got a twenty-four inch pipe going all the way to the S- MMSD treatment plant. Um, so because we've got pumps conveying it, we go through a smaller, smaller diameter pipe. And we don't have.
These are done all the time. I mean, these, this is, you know, this is very routine. I mean, uh, MMSD has huge.
Much larger.
Interceptors and force mains and everything, you know, that that do this. And when you think of, I think we get, or they get, they get uh sentary from DeForest.
Mm-hmm.
You know, which is.
A ways.
A long ways. So um while it's, it is a long distance for us to get up to the Madison Met pump station, maybe six, seven miles.
Seven miles.
Um, you know, it's not outside the realm of possibilities. You know, it, it does make sense. And then all the water, just kind of the, as a caveat to this, all the water that gets treated in MMSD plant actually comes back into Badfish Creek and discharges right at uh Highway B, you know, in in the town of Dunn. And all of that flows down and then once it, it joins our little creek and then into, into Badfish Creek. So from a, from a hydrologic standpoint, it's really going to almost the exact same location.
We discharge within a couple of miles of each other, yep.
Corey, did you still have a question?
Yes, uh, the cyan interceptor, it's my understanding that that is, doesn't have capacity and it would need a relief sewer. The cost for that, is that included in the connection fee or capital cost? Because that to me could swing the cost significantly too.
You are correct. Um, it is not because we have not gotten that cost from Madison. Um, so we've been relying on Madison Met for a lot of the received, receipt into Madison costs or all of those costs. Um, and DNR, in the DNR analysis, will not allow us to use that anyway because that's considered a sunk cost associated with the cyan interceptor. Madison's initial impression there was certainly at the beginning of, like when Oregon would hook up, that interceptor would not need to be upsized. There would be sufficient capacity in the existing, I think it's thirty or thirty-six inch pipe uh to collect what is in Fitchburg currently and what Oregon would be contributing. But then as time goes on and that would grow, they would either replace or install a relief interceptor on that uh to collect those additional flows. And the way Madison looks at it is that cost would only be borne by new customers. So today's residents actually wouldn't be paying that. New development in both Oregon and Fitchburg would be paying for that.
So that.
But they would, the, the other thing that I'll point out that is not included in here um is in that scenario, that cyan interceptor would have to be purchased from Fitchburg um or capacity rights somehow given to Madison Met uh for the not used by Fitchburg portion. And that is not in here either. So that's a real cost that would affect today's residents of the village. However, the DNR also won't allow us to include those costs in there. So um, those are both very good points.
One, one other thing I, I wanted to ask was the connection fees. Is that fully due the second we connect? Or does that get paid at the time kind of the customer connections actually happen?
That's a very good question as well. The answer for Madison Met is, it's negotiable. Um, the last time Madison Met added a municipality was Verona in the early nineties. So the, none of the staff at Madison Met today really have a specific precedent for what has to happen. If you're a developer connecting to that, my understanding is they pay that at the time of uh connection to the system. Um, and it's based upon the square footage of the development in the developed area. Um, here, they're kind of treating in this, in the memo that is in your packet and how they calculate everything. They're kind of develop, they're kind of treating Oregon as it's a new development of connection. And so you're treated in the very same way that they treat a new subdivision anywhere else in the Madison Met sewer area. Um, how, so the cost, a- at least as, as I see it right now, the cost is really not a negotiable item because they can't treat the village any differently than they treat developer Bob, you know, into Forest. However, the uh terms of payment are a negotiable item, I would envision um because we're talking about such large numbers. You know, a developer connects, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe at the most, um, not tens of millions of dollars. Whereas we're talking about tens of millions of dollars that today's residents of the village uh would be bearing.
Yeah, I think that may help significantly with cash flow.
Yes, um, and some of that, as we get to the table that's up there, I'll, I'll mention exactly how, some of these, what, what goes into some of these numbers as I'm talking about it.
Randy, Randy has one question.
Oh, yeah.
Ben, can we just go back to the capital, I just want to make sure I understand. So the, the, the one, the nineteen million, seven, four, four.
Yep.
Was if we stay.
If you stay on your, yep.
On our own. And then the, the other one is the tw- the twenty-twenty-four because we're not going to get into the twenty-nineteen.
Twenty-twenty-four is the realistic number.
Thirty-two million, right?
I would say twenty-six point eight to thirty-two.
Okay.
Again, there, there's a range of cost there depending on where and how we pump.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood the difference.
Yeah, okay, then we got, we got, let him keep going.
Yeah, just quickly, does the MMSD alternative include our capital cost to demolish our existing plant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we also, also have land acquisition costs getting sewage out there?
Right now, what we've prepared for cost estimates, it's utilizing the public right-of-way one hundred percent.
Okay.
Um, we've, the, the layout currently utilizes um, I mean essentially village-owned property to go straight east across Highway fourteen, follow the Highway fourteen right-of-way and then jump on to County Highway MM until we get to Nine Springs.
And who pays for that? Good news. And what, could you define what a relief interceptor is?
A relief interceptor would be a second interceptor installed parallel to an existing one um to increase capacity.
Okay.
So it'd be an alternative to just, you know, go from twenty, you know, if, if there's a thirty-six inch pipe in Fitchburg now and they need to upsize to forty-eight, instead of tearing out the old and putting in a new forty-eight inch pipe, they may put in um, you know, a twenty-four inch alongside or another thirty-six inch alongside. That would be a relief interceptor.
Thank you.
Do you want to continue?
Yes.
All right.
All right, the, the next page that is up on the screen right now, um, it's titled Present Worth Summary of Analyses. So this is really what gets into the meat and potatoes of a cost-effectiveness evaluation. And I'm going to go through, hopefully quite quickly, exactly what goes into each of these because then I think there's going to be quite a bit of discussion following that. So going from top to bottom, uh, the rows uh existing is just your tw- that annualized cost is what you guys had for O and M and debt expenses that I could glean out of the twenty-eighteen audit. Um, alternative one, low PW would be the low present worth cost. Um, and then alternative one, ideal PW is that nineteen point seven million dollar total scope, the present worth cost of that. And then alternative two, low and high are the range of costs from for pumping to Madison Met again. As we go left to right on that page, the total analysis is uh considering all costs. And it's what I feel should be done. And that includes the connection fees in the present worth analysis. A couple of things to note in there, um, I'm assuming in all of the alternative one scenarios that we do the blower project in twenty-twenty. And then we have a phase one project in uh twenty-twenty-one and a phase two project in twenty-twenty-four. Um, that will be something I talk about when we get done with all of this because I did do some playing around with numbers this afternoon. Um, but that's the assumptions that are in there right now. And in the pump to Madison situation, um, we're assuming uh all of those costs occur in twenty-twenty-four. The other thing that is an added complication to all of this is in this cost-effectiveness evaluation, that thirty-five to thirty-seven million that we're talking about for your existing facility is how to make a facility that would be, have capacity for sixteen thousand three hundred residents and associated commercial and industrial growth. The nineteen million, cap- The nineteen million capital cost that we talked about for the Madison Metropolitan Sewers District is for the existing approximate ten thousand people that are here today. So what this reflects in the total analysis is the overall connection cost that would be associated with sixteen thousand three hundred residents, because that's really how you compare apples to apples. Because new developer Bob, who comes in and says, I want to build a development in Oregon in twenty-twenty-five, is going to have to pay that same connection fee that we're talking about that generated the nineteen million dollars, based on whatever the size of his development is. So we try to include that, the consideration of the entire sixteen thousand three hundred persons that are included in this planning document. So that generates a lot larger number than even that nineteen million, because new residents are going to have to pay that as well. So you can see in that total analysis column, when you include the connection fees, it's a no-brainer. You stay as the village. You know, it's thirty-five to thirty-seven million to maintain your existing treatment plant and not make improvements. And it's fifty-six to sixty million present worth cost to pump to Madison. If you go to the next column over, that is how the DNR wants us to look at it, which is not including any connection fees. What we have gotten them to agree to is if there is a connection fee associated with infrastructure that has not been installed yet, that can be included. So something like the cyan interceptor extension, which has not been installed yet, is included in that, the present worth cost. But you can see then, that drops it by about thirty million dollars, down to, a little more than thirty million dollars, down to thirty-two to thirty-three million. In that situation, the DNR, and, and based on that analysis, the DNR would make you select the pump to Madison Met scenario as the most cost-effective option. Because those are big scary numbers and truly in the big picture don't mean a ton for you today as decision-makers or for residents today who live in the village, I added that annual cost and the cost per user. So the annual cost is take all of those capital costs, including the connection fees, and assume we're going to take out debt for them. And then what would the O and M and replacement fund costs that you guys would set aside be? And in the Madison Met scenarios, how much are you going to pay Madison Met to treat your sewage? Because that connection fee is not what you pay every month for sewage treatment. That's what you're paying to get caught up with everyone else who's caught on the system. You still then have a cost per gallon, a cost per pound of BOD, and a cost per user that you're paying to Madison Met based on what they measure from your sewage. So that annual cost column is what your, essentially your annual sewer budget would turn into. So right now, it's just over a million, one point one million. In the concept of expanding your treatment facility, that would increase to between two and two point two million. And if you're pumping to Madison, that increases to three point seven to four point three million. That cost per user then just breaks it down for you of, you know, take each one of those numbers, divide by number of users, and divide by twelve months per year, gives you an approximate cost per user per month. This is not intend, I'm going to throw a giant caveat, this is not a user rate analysis. This takes into account nothing associated with the size of meters or, you know, what type of payment is going on with any of these. Because the other thing I'm going to point out, just for consideration, is in that annual cost column, the debt is all assumed to be a twenty-year, two and a half percent interest loan, except for the connection fees. The connection fees, I kind of view as a different thing, because the debt is just going to be paid for over time by whoever is a resident of the village. The connection fee is really just associated with the residents of the village at the time of connection. So you can't really put that on your user rates. It's really more like a special assessment. By putting it, if you put it on your user rates, you're, you're in essence going to charge future contributors to your sewer system for stuff that should have been paid for by your existing users, because those new users are also going to have to pay a connection fee. So this assumes that that connection fee charge gets paid for over a ten-year period. I think I still assumed a two and a half percent interest rate, but more along the lines of how you would treat a special assessment. So that's how the numbers get generated there.
And then just so I, if I clarify-
Yep.
When you say cost per user, this is really cost per connection?
Yes.
Not you.
Yes. Cost per connection is a better, yep.
It's, but, yeah.
Yes. That's probably a better way to state it.
We estimate about forty-three hundred, I think, is-
Something like that.
We might estimate that's about how many connections we have currently.
So like per household or per business, you mean?
Roughly, yep.
So I mean, you could just, I mean-
Yeah. When we get to the user rate portion of this, it'll get a little more complicated, because in, in all situations, a two-inch meter gets charged more. I think you guys are set up to have that be eight times more than what a, a single household would be. So that'll change these numbers a little bit. But this just gives you a very basic glance at what the potential cost ramifications are for a resident.
Just looking at it strictly kind of from a scale perspective, too.
Yep.
You know, I mean, right now, if you say, okay, we're at about twenty-one dollars and seventy-three cents, you know, by the time we make the plant improvements and everything like this, you know, we, we could realistically expect our rates to double, you know, for our sanitary. If we follow within the alternative two, it could be significantly higher.
Okay, quadruple.
Quadruple, yeah. So just that's really-
Yep.
To me, the takeaway from this, not necessarily the exact numbers, just think of-
Yep.
Percentage differences.
So one of the takeaways for me is, so we're going, we're looking at all these numbers, but then I, I heard you say the DNR is going to make you choose that one anyway.
Yeah.
So why are we doing this when we're going to be told which one to do anyway?
Well, I guess, a couple of things.
Okay.
You've got to do this planning effort, no matter what, for you guys to do anything at your treatment facility. So that's why the whole thing was initiated, from the start. I disagree with the DNR's look at this, in, in its most basic sense. I, I don't agree that the connection fees should be included, or should not, should not be included. Should be, yep. I, I think that total analysis is truly how it should be looked at. And so there's, there's levels of how do we address those questions or concerns from the DNR standpoint. But then also, the, the practical side of things is you need, in order for you guys to move ahead with any, even maintenance really, projects at your treatment facility and address your long-term needs, all of those are reviewable projects. And in order for you to do a project that is reviewed by the DNR, you have to have a plan in place. So we've got to, we've got to, got to do this. We're kind of stuck in a rock and a hard place in the next zero to five years of, you know, in order for you to make any improvements to your treatment facility, to even address aging infrastructure and make sure things are up to snuff, you've got to have this plan eventually submitted.
But we should probably know that in the end, they may tell us which one we have to choose anyway, or-
Potentially.
Is that political and it depends on-
It gets a little bit political. It'll also get to, so, so the other side of this is, it also depends when we assume projects will happen. Again, I assumed the, and this might, let me take a, take one step back on that. What I was going to say before, I looked at the numbers again this afternoon, was you really have a range of options from this standpoint. The most simple option is you say, okay, yes, DNR, we're going to just do what you tell us to, and we're going to end up spending an extra million and a half per year as a village to do that. Which, personal opinion, I don't think that's the right thing to do. But that would be complying with the DNR and what they have stated to date. The other alternative would be we disagree with the DNR. And that could take a range of potential approaches from, starting with me writing a letter back to the DNR, disagreeing with what they stated. I don't think that would go very far, but, because we've had a lot of conversations with them already, but that would be a start. And if you, as a village board, was still felt strongly enough that you did not want to pump to Madison, if that is what you feel, then, you know, we would write this facility's plan, still selecting alternative one, and force the DNR to deny it, in which case then you would contest DNR's determination, and it would turn into essentially a lawsuit. Yeah, everyone wins when there's a lawsuit, right? But those, those are kind of the two polar extremes. Now, one thing that kind of makes this a little confusing, or even more confusing, is it, it also depends when we assume your projects are going to happen. So as you may recall, I mentioned for alternative one, I had originally assumed the blower project happened next year. Phase one happened in twenty-twenty-one, and phase two happened in twenty-twenty-four. And the reason I did that to start was I viewed phase one as being something that should happen over the next zero to five years, and phase two, something that should happen over the next five to ten years. So just put it at the front of that. If we move that to the back of the analysis, so phase one would happen in twenty-twenty-four and phase two would happen in twenty-twenty-nine, that would substantially reduce the alternative one present worth analysis and bring them all to within that ten percent of each other.
As I say, because right now, alternative two-
They're not quite ten percent.
Is almost ten percent.
So just by making that minor adjustment, and then also, we just, this afternoon, got from Madison Met, what portions of their treatment plant connection charge are old costs versus projected cost? So if you take both of those into consideration, you can bring the present worth in that DNR analysis column to within about four percent. And in that case, we could just submit it as-is and say all costs are equal, and therefore we're going to select ideal or low, which is in your financial best interest, because it's going to be the lowest cost and impact for your residents. So that is a magic loophole that I feel a lot better about. Jeff didn't even know about before this.
Can control our own destiny, perhaps. Yes.
The other thing to comment, and what we've talked about through all of this, even, let's say, let's say we as a village, after we laid through this, everything with DNR, we, we're still in alternative one. We were looking at upgrades to pumping station and everything like that. We would definitely be building these facilities with the future in mind.
Yes.
I mean, let's look at, you know, we're thinking twenty years now on this facility plan, but let's think fifty years or sixty years. You know, there will be a day where, I'm, I'm convinced that we will be pumping to Madison Met. You know, whether that's fifty years, twenty years, five years, who knows? And, you know, these facilities, obviously this facility is going on what, seventy-five, eighty years old and still working and, and, you know. So we would, if we built a pump station, like a new pump station, headworks building, we would make sure that we're building that pump station with idea in mind of expansion and, and conversion of that to a, so you're not, you're not throwing away everything. You're still always moving forward with that in mind.
Right. And that's one of, kind of playing off that, because I didn't spend a whole lot of time on it earlier, that's one of the reasons why we're, we're always presenting this alternative one low and the ideal. Because when we were talking about it as, at a staff level, you know, certainly, if you want to save money, you can probably make that alternative one low work, but it's not going to be the, the best situation for you as a treatment plant or really as a village long-term, because it's a, it's a short, in my mind, it's a short-sighted view at treating wastewater here in the village. If you do this ideal, it's, it's kind of embracing, if we're going to, you know, spend whatever it is, seventeen or twenty million dollars on the treatment plant, let's make sure that this treatment plant is going to meet our needs long-term. Let's not short-change ourselves. So if we do have changing regulations, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that are potentially in flux with things that may have to be addressed at the treatment plant long-term. Let's make sure we can address those without having to spend an extra million or million and a half in just new pumping facilities inside the treatment plant. And similarly, if we can replace the existing pump station, that one will, will give you a better and more maintainable pump station for the future. But then that's a pump station that could also twenty, forty, sixty, eighty years from now be used to pump to Madison Met. So really, that alternative one ideal provides you a lot of opportunities to best utilize the existing treatment plant site, hedge your bets, knowing that regulations are going to change in the future, but still keep your cost of treatment for the next twenty years well below that of Madison Met, but not preclude you from someday pumping to Madison Met. Because I, I do think regionalization and consolidation, I mean, it's a, it's a benefit. You know, it, it reduces a lot of risk for you as a village, but it can't come at such extreme costs that it has a real negative impact for your users.
And then the other thing I just wanted to make sure we brought out tonight is, you know, this, this property right here that I'm, that I'm kind of highlighting here, you know, that's, that's the, the original wastewater treatment, or the wastewater treatment plant. Area that was previously reserved for future expansion included this area, which is the ice skating arena. And then this is the lacrosse field, and then this is the sledding hill, and then this is the regional detention pond for the high school. So, you know, in the past, what, fifteen years, the village has sold this parcel to the, to the ice arena folks. And we've allowed this to go in, which it's all, it's all good. It's all, and I, I still wholly support all of this. But what, what land was at one time thought to be reserved for future plant expansion is kind of been eaten up. You know, we also have our, our brush pile over here, which isn't something hard to move, but it's, you know, this starts to get down into the really wet area here. We still have room for expansion, you know, and pump stations and other stuff, you know, at, you know, at the plant. But obviously, JCPark West with its reconstruction is going to start putting some pressure on our, our borders here. But what, you know, we can't think of the fact that we have a ton of land to, you know, expand anymore.
Can, so what, what we're talking about tonight, can we actually do with the land that we have?
Yes.
Okay.
The one, the one, the two things that Jeff and I have talked about is, in that ideal situation, where we build a new pump station and build a new headworks building, potentially maybe rearranging the proposed JCPark storm ponds so that we have a little bit more space on the west end of the treatment plant. And then also look at utilizing those park, the park, the proposed storm ponds for the park as a regional stormwater thing, because we'll have to address stormwater at the treatment facility as well. So to the most extent possible, kind of get double duty out of those storm ponds. But otherwise, yeah, the, the, one of the big things, just big picture of why it's working out to be more cost-effective for us to stay as a village treating us versus going to Madison Met, is you have a lot of infrastructure that's able to be reused. You know, if you, all of those rectangular tanks on there, the eastern, you know, essentially the whole western portion and the whole far eastern portion of the treatment plant are going to be reused and repurposed and just modified in minor ways to address age. It's really the circles in the middle, and then the building on the north and the building across the creek that we're proposing really need to be kind of redone. So that, in, in the big picture, while twenty million dollars is still a lot of money, you know, especially, I mean, just in the big picture, that's a lot of money, that's a big part of why you're able to cost-effectively continue treating in the village, more so than going to Madison. Because there, I mean, there's a huge economy of scale, obviously, going to something as big as the Madison Met Sewers District. And if you had to reconstruct your plant completely and go to just a new site altogether, it would be more cost-effective to go to Madison. There'd, there'd be no doubt about that, because you'd be spending forty million, fifty million just to build a new treatment plant for yourselves.
And I would say, and I'm not saying this because Sunny, one of my operators, is back there in the, in the, in this, but we have three outstanding operators that take very good care of our equipment. They take pride in the plant. And, and they get that equipment, they keep it running and running well, and they do an exceptional job with that. And so I, to, you know, to our extent, that's one of the reasons why we have, we are sitting, we're sitting pretty well here.
Yes, yep.
But it's just like anything else. You have an old car, still running well, but you know there's certain things coming down, you know, the road that you're going to have to replace, engine, air conditioning, tires, whatever, suspension, you know, and those type of things.
So can I, how much more presentation do you have?
That essentially runs through it.
Okay. So now we can have more type of questions.
So as much discussion as you guys want to have, or if you have questions about details, essentially the rest of the pass, packet is just fine details of, of everything that goes into this.
All right. I just didn't want to cut you off, if you have like, no, thirty minutes.
Nope.
So questions? Who, I, Jenna, did you have one, or you're good for right now? Maybe somebody else who has a better, more formed, and then I'll get Jerry.
Thanks. That was a very informative presentation. I, I completely changed my mind during this presentation.
About engineers or wastewater?
Let's say wastewater. Let's say wastewater.
Okay.
I, I initially thought that, you know, it's time to hook up with Madison Metro, but having listened to your presentation, I'm completely forming a different opinion. But I'm concerned about cost. And no matter what we do, there's going to be additional costs. Is there a way, are there steps we can take now to lessen a spike in cost when we start this process?
That's a good question. I think really the next step of the facilities plan, again, assuming you guys are comfortable with, and let's, let's just play out the scenario of deciding to stay on our own and go with the ideal scenario.
Let's use that one.
What, what the next steps would be is, you know, we'll look at that specific scenario and the phasing and just make sure that staff's comfortable with the phasing of that and lay out a, a cash flow associated with your user rates. And we know, you know, you guys are intending to do the blower project next year and I believe have been budgeted for that already in capital improvements.
Right. We're not actually borrowing anything for that.
Right. Yeah, you're using cash on hand for that. The, the next steps of looking at this are kind of planning your rates over the next five years and the advantage you guys have, playing off of what Jeff said, is you do have a very well maintained plant. And really the, the most dire need thing is this blower project because that's got the oldest infrastructure that you have at that treatment plant. The other things, you know, nothing's in a dire strait. So I think when we look at the user rates and talk about a project in the next zero to five years, structuring the user rates so that it's a gradual increase over that next zero to five years and, and planning that in conjunction with when you, I guess more selectively choosing when you're going to do the construction would be a key there. And there's other things that you can even do associated with that of, you know, maybe you do a little bit of the design of that treatment facility early on so that you more specifically know the scope of what you're going to do. And then you also, in that regard, can position yourself to be in the best bidding market possible. Because as you guys are probably seeing in other village projects, the bidding market is not great right now. You know, the last couple of years, it's been a very hot construction market. There's a lack, a shortage of, of staff in the construction industry and there's an overabundance of work because the economy is doing so well. So you're, there's a high level of competition to get qualified contractors. However, we don't know what that's going to be five years from now and, you know, you guys could take some steps over the next two or three years to position yourselves to be in a more ready to bid situation so that if the economy and the construction industry slows down a little bit and provides an opportunity for better bids, you're in a good position for that. Because, you know, it's, it's kind of wild what the economy and bidding will do to cost numbers.
I agree. I was more or less referring to, is it possible to start raising rates now?
That's, that's what I would propose. That's what I was getting at with the cash flow is we can lay out, you know, what would be the impact if you do one big rate increase versus, you know, you know, 5% per year or something like that.
I personally would hate to do one big one.
No, I, I completely agree with you.
But would that, will, would those costs also address leakage, the remedies that we have to?
Our, my intention, when I, whenever I put together a user rate impact is to allocate a certain amount of dollars in the, in the O and M cost. Now, that's not included in any of this, obviously, but, because this is just looking at the treatment plant, but certainly as we look at the overall user rate impact, making sure that there's specific dollars set aside for collection system improvements is always an important thing.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, Corey?
In your analysis of these types of projects, do you, you know, I know the DNR's planning cycle is 20 years, but when I'm thinking about this, you know, as much as I don't want to have, you know, a spike in, in rates at all, I also don't want to, you know, spend money that gets us through 20 years that then we're spending triple, you know, when we hit our next planning cycle for this plant. You know, I'm a little bit concerned that we're, we're pretty tight on space, like Jeff said, with, with our current plant configuration. And when we go to our next 20-year cycle, we may not have a choice with, you know, being able to get capacity on our existing facility and property and things like that. So in essence, we're kind of avoiding the inevitable. And I guess financially, do you think it would be wise to look at 40-year planning cycle rather than a 20-year planning cycle?
You could. The, the reason that the DNR has always gone to a 20-year and requires a 20-year is mostly because of the unknown going out as far as, as 40 years, especially in a smaller community. You know, if you have a metro area like Madison and you're, let's say you're the CARPSY and you're Regional Planning Commission, it's a lot easier to plan for population changes and whatnot in a metro area than it is on a small individual basis. What I will say, that doesn't specifically address the 40-year point, but more looks at that $20 million, the ideal scenario is, I think that that, a little differently than what maybe the, the look at the pump station and headworks and pump, you know, kind of your treatment plant in general, that ideal scenario provides you a lot more flexibility for the future. It's not a situation where you're going to be putting in 20 years from now, a pump station, another pump station and another headworks building. Because in, in reality, that existing headworks building should have served you for another 20 or 30 years. I mean, it, it was put in in 1996. It's not a structure that should be abandoned. However, because of the way it was laid out, you know, it's, it's really too small to service your long-term needs. And it's too small to service really today's needs. So if, when you look at the potential increases, it just becomes impractical to continue using it and it's, it's a very difficult structure to add on to and expand. Whereas, you know, if you can better address that in the long-term with that influence pumping and headworks and then parallel to that, start targeting this I and I, you have the ability to kind of, in conjunction with both of those, create a structure that's going to last you for 60 or 80 years. Is that?
Yeah.
I, I think the ideal scenario, while it does maximize the use of your space there, gives you space that can be used beyond the 20-year planning period.
I have one other question, but if anyone else has one.
I'll just keep going.
You know, one problem I think that we always deal with, with the wastewater is, is the changing dynamic of regulations. And, you know, I think, like you had identified, we have more risk, you know, having our own treatment plant versus, you know, being with Madison Metropolitan Sewerage District. It's very difficult to quantify, you know, that though, which, which is, you know, is very tough. You know, if, if adaptive management and, you know, phosphorus things change, our plant could change significantly if they start regulating things like PFAS.
PFAS, true.
You know, that could be just a cost that we're unable to bear, that we may be forced to go to MMSD if, if those things happen. So, you know, there are some reasons, I think, too, that we, you know, need to think through kind of the difficult things that, that are tough to quantify, but we can't discount them at the same time.
Yep. And, and I, I completely agree with that. And that is one of the major unquantifiable advantages to going to Madison. Because I, I will not disagree at any point that there's an advantage in pumping to Madison just from that risk aversion standpoint. Madison Met actually probably put it the best when we met with them last week in that part of it also is you got to look at what's going to impact us and not Madison. Because if we're pumping to Madison and PFA has become a thing, Madison's also going to have to address it. And while there are order of magnitude cost differences, a, a major constituent like that is going to have a, an enormous impact even on the Madison Met Sewerage District area. So from their standpoint, they kind of looked at it as what might affect Oregon that would not affect Madison Met. And really in sitting down with them and in my review of everything, the biggest thing would be disinfection. Currently, you do not disinfect your wastewater because you're discharging to what's considered a non-recreational use stream. These cost estimates do not include anything to do disinfection because it's still, you're not required to disinfect at your treatment facility. What I did do however, is included just some ballpark numbers of what would it cost to disinfect at your facility in the present worth analysis, which again, not pushing the ideal scenario too much, but that's one of the things the ideal scenario allows you to do is, you know, if you have disinfection become a thing 10 years from now, you don't have to build a new pump station when you do the ideal scenario. You just put in about a half million dollar structure that would serve as your disinfection structure. Whereas if you have the treatment plant today, that disinfection would cost you about three times that. But disinfection's really the only thing that Madison Met does now that you don't do. Otherwise, if, if adaptive management doesn't work and you have, both you and Madison Met have to address phosphorus compliance individually, and both of you will have extreme costs associated with that. If PFAS is a thing, same, same story. If nitrogen's a thing, those are, you know, that's another potential regulatory thing coming down the pipe, it, it's going to be the same story. So Madison kind of looked at it from that, or MMSD kind of looked at it from that standpoint of, you know, balancing risk in that regard. The only real risk that you have of happening to you that's not going to also then happen to Madison is that disinfection, which is a pretty small, in the big picture, a small thing to worry about.
But I think they do have, you know, scaling factor.
Yes, there is very much so. Yep, yep.
You guys understand what disinfection is?
I was going to ask that.
Okay.
Disinfection would be kind of a final step at a treatment process in which you're either adding chlorine or using UV light to kill off any last pathogens. Right now, I would say probably 80 to 85% of the municipalities in the state disinfect and the ones that don't, it's because they're discharging to such a small stream that is considered non-recreational use. So the pathogens really aren't negative to the environment. It's more if there's direct contact with people swimming in the creek downstream of your discharge. So in your case, the Oregon branch is considered small enough that it's non-recreational use. Once you get to Madison Met's receiving water, it is large enough because Madison Met is 90% of the stream flow and it makes it a river. So then that becomes a recreational use stream. The DNR has talked about eliminating that exemption, in which case then that remaining 20 to 15 to 20% of municipalities that don't disinfect would install or would be required to install disinfection. But that's something that's down the road.
Is that in Dane County or statewide?
That's statewide.
Okay.
It's complex, isn't it?
It's kind of fascinating.
It is. Well, that's, in fact, actually Mike and I were just saying that this afternoon. I said, I think it's a very fascinating discussion because there are a lot of things that go into making this decision. And one of the, I think the fears that we had in, in just, in, in Town and Country being able to present this tonight is, you know, so that we can understand kind of why, understand the decision and how it affects our residents and kind of what goes into those decisions. And it's not, it's not just cut and dry, black and white, easy. And, and these numbers are, are, are just numbers right now. And there's nothing like, you wouldn't go out and borrow $35 million because there's a lot more that has to go into the thinking of this. And, and, and they're all with it comes, you hit it right on the nail. I had some frustration, you know, when you're kind of being quote forced to do something that could be 40 to 50% more, you know, cost more, doesn't make, you know, doesn't make any sense. So it's, it's tricky.
Any last question? This has been very, very informational. Thank you for breaking it down so that people of me could actually understand it and ask somewhat.
And all the wonderful definitions.
Right.
Yeah, right. Those things I don't really worry about because I know that you guys know what they mean. So I don't worry about those things.
Couple other things just to kind of close up discussion tonight. And if anyone has more questions, I'm happy to answer them. So really the next steps from here moving forward, I'm, I'm kind of hearing, but I don't want to put you guys on the spot of, you know, you're kind of in agreement that alternative one is probably what would be preferred. I think what I'd like to do is probably not next week already because that's your next meeting, but maybe at the first meeting in January, chat about this again. And just if there are other questions that come up as you guys ruminate on it and think about it, we can address those. That 10% phenomenon that I said I looked at this afternoon, I'm going to clean up a little bit now that I have some more numbers from Madison Met and can tell you with a little more confidence, yes or no, based on the DNR's requirements, we feel it's within 10%, which gives you really the freedom to pick any option that you want. And then in January, ask you guys to formally decide which option you want, which then would mean, probably at the February meeting, I'd give you guys a user rate impact and maybe in March, we'd have a public hearing or present the final plan and then have a special meeting for a public hearing.
Like it'd be January 20th.
Okay. January 20th meeting.
So that'd be going on the sixth.
Would that, would, would that include a potential rate increase to, to prevent spike?
Yeah, I would, I would, in the user rate impact, I would be looking at a, a range of potential, how you might implement that over, over the course of years. And then it'll be a question for you guys, how you actually want to implement that over the course. But my goal would be similar to this, is kind of provide you the gamut of, you know, what could you do so that you guys can make an educated decision on what you want to do?
I don't want to raise, I don't want to spike the rates.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. And that's happened in, in quite a few utilities. Every once in a while, you see in the league magazine, you know, where someone comes in and has to double or even triple their water rates or something and that's if they haven't really been.
We'd be off, this board would be gone.
Well, they have, you know, four miles south in Brooklyn, how many, I mean, and it's greatly impacted all of their budgets and what they can do as a community. And I always have that in the back of my head that I don't want that to happen here.
Right. We're trying to avoid the surprises.
Right.
And, and what's going to follow this on, on another side is actually a water facilities plan too, because we have that and, and water rates and everything like that we're looking at and stuff.
Yeah.
But I guess reality is, we're going to double. I mean, that's the best case scenario here, you know?
Over time.
Yeah.
We get to determine what that time period is.
Right. That's why I want to start sooner rather than later.
And I guess I would like to stress, you know, with alternative one, I, I really like the idea of the ideal situation just because it allows us future flexibility.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of lean in that way too.
And to wrap this all up, we expect a full report?
Yeah, I, so if, if we talk through that, I would say we, we'd be presenting a full report in March and then when we do the public hearing, we'll have that available for any public that might want to. But then I would envision that being more of a presentation style where I would give a presentation to any public that are available or want to, interested and curious. And typically what that entails is about a half hour presentation about the final report. And then following that, you guys would give a final blessing to the report that we would then submit to DNR.
Okay.
And then we're on that path.
Yep.
You know, we're on that path to what, how that outlines us moving forward, capital plan and everything.
Yeah, that gives you then a capital plan. It is, it gives you in that, if, again, that alternative one ideal scenario, it kind of gives you free rein to start implementing that as you see fit.
Very good.
I agree.
Jerry?
One final question. Jeff, when you are involved in a capital plan with roads, is that in the road plan or is that in the wastewater treatment plan?
Road, in the roadway plan.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of our.
Because we're replacing sewer pipe?
Well, no, this, none of this deals with sewer pipe. I mean, we, but, but yeah, when we look at, at replacing a roadway, we, we do evaluate that as part of the sewer budget and everything like that. But yeah, that all comes into that for, for borrowing and that, you know, I will say, you know, what, we've been able to operate our wastewater, our wastewater utility very efficiently.
I would very hardly agree with that.
And, you know, and I, again, it goes back to our operators, it goes back to our equipment that we maintain and everything like that is, you know, we, we've been able to be very efficient. So we have not had a rate increase for a very long time period. And that's probably a, a positive and a negative at the same time. It's positive that we haven't had a rate increase, probably negative that we haven't been fore- It's positive that we have an end rate increase, probably negative that we haven't been forecasting to get to a point where we'd be in a better position. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
But even if we can do that, the rate increase over time, over the next five years.
It's like retirement, it never hurts to start when, wherever you are at your-
It's a very good analogy.
Thanks. I'm starting tomorrow. Thirty-five years I'll be out here.
We should have a retirement date for a wastewater treatment plan.
Right.
You know.
Oh, then they, then they run a party.
Somebody say cake?
The treatment plan isn't quite as good.
Mike, do you have anything else for us?
Nope, that's it.
All right, I would, I would motion to adjourn then.
Some, some, second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.